Good evening, welcome to beautiful downtown Denison, Texas for the city council meeting of Monday, August the 21st, 2023. At this time, we'd like to call on Reverend Steve Suffren, pastor of the First Baptist Church, to give our indications.
I'd like you to pray with me. Father God, we come to you this afternoon just humbling ourselves before you, knowing that you are God and we are not, and that you are the one who can guide us into prosperity and into good for our town and for our city and for our community and for the people of our community. And so, Father, I ask that you would come be among us as the city council meets today, that you would bring your light of wisdom, that you would guide us in goodness, guide us in what is right, and Lord, that you would guide all that is said here, and Lord, we just pray for this town, that you would help us to be a light in this area, in this state, a place where people can know that the people who are running this town are doing good for them, and Lord, that you can bring us all together to do good together. It's in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We're honored tonight to have three members of our fire rescue department to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and we'd invite all of you fire rescue gentlemen to come up if you'd like. Leading our pledge of allegiance will be Assistant Chief Eskemia, Jamie Robinson, and Colton Gilchrist. Gentlemen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state of God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. And at this time, if I could invite all of the fire rescue team up to the front, we have a proclamation for you guys. Please come up. Ladies and gentlemen, it is a great honor this evening to present a proclamation to the Denison Fire Rescue, and the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas, the safety and well-being of our community residents are of utmost importance, and fire protection services are crucial in safeguarding lives, property, and the environment. And whereas, the Insurance Services Office, also known as ISO, is a leading provider of statistical, actuarial, underwriting, and claims information to the insurance industry, and their public protection classification system evaluates fire protection capabilities of communities on a scale of one to 10, with one being the highest. And whereas, achieving an ISO rating of one is a significant accomplishment that reflects the exemplary dedication, hard work, and professionalism of the Denison Fire Rescue. And whereas, this remarkable achievement is not possible without the collaborative efforts and support from various city departments that have contributed to enhancing fire protection capability and emergency response services. And whereas, the combined commitment and coordination by the Denison Fire Rescue between the Denison Police Department, the Public Works, the Development Services, and City Administration have all played a pivotal role in achieving this top-tier ISO rating. And whereas, an ISO rating of one is not only highlights the exceptional fire protection capabilities of our community, but also contributes to potential reductions in the insurance premiums for residential and commercial properties, leading to substantial financial benefits for all of our residents and all of our businesses. Now therefore, I, Janet Gott, Mayor of the City of Denison, do hereby proclaim with immense pride and appreciation that the City of Denison has achieved an ISO rating of one, and we call upon all citizens to celebrate this significant achievement and continue to support Denison Fire Rescue in their efforts to maintain this highest level of fire protection services for the well-being and security of our entire community. In witness whereof, I've heretofore set my hand and have caused to be affixed the seal of the City of Denison on the 21st day of August 2023, signed by Mayor Janet Gott. Gentlemen and ladies, our great Denison Fire Rescue Department. Chief, it's a great honor to present this proclamation to you, and would you like to say a few words to the kind citizens here?
As you said before, this is a team effort. You know, this takes every bit of the people of the City of Denison, city council, city manager, assistant city manager, Ronnie Bates from the Public Works, Chief Gudgel that leads the dispatchers. I said, all I do is set the direction and set the expectations. These are the people that make it work, kind of deal. And so, I think it just represents us as a city that we don't settle for average. We settle for the best. So, that's what brings people here, and that's why this is the city of choice. So, congratulations to you all, to you all, and to you all.
How many times have you gone to sleep lately and worried about a fire? Not many of us, but these gentlemen, assisted by our fire department, our police department, and all the departments of the city make a huge difference in our community. And we are and want to continue to be the city of choice. So, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all, and thank your families for allowing you to share part of your lives with the City of Denison. Thank you very much, guys. Okay, item number three is public comments. Citizens may speak on items listed on the agenda. A request to speak card should be completed and returned to the city clerk prior upon arrival to the council chambers, reaching the public comment section of this agenda. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes unless otherwise required by law. Comments related to the public hearings listed below will be heard when the specific hearing starts. Ms. Wallantine, do we have any request to speak cards?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Item number four is the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Hander, a second by Councilman Courtright, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item number five on our agenda is public hearings, and the first one will be presented by Ms. York. If you'd come forward, we're going to receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance to rezone the southwest corner of Katy Memorial Expressway North and Randell Lake Road legally described as the H.B. Thomas Survey, abstract 1272, and the R.B. Smith Survey, abstract number 1160, in addition to the City of Denison. GCAT property ID number 219088, from light industrial in the highway-oriented and corridor district overlay to a planned development zoning district to allow for the use of a warehouse, mini warehouse self-storage and commercial uses. This is case number 2023-060PD. Ms. York, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Protem, Council. Good evening. The item I have for you tonight is a request to rezone. This is the aerial of that subject property, right off of 75 and North Randell Lake Road. It is currently zoned light industrial, and the applicant is requesting a planned development, as mentioned, to accommodate the use of mini warehouse self-storage. Because this property also falls within the highway overlay, this use is prohibited. That's the reason for the planned development request. This is a concept plan of how the property is going to be developed. Per the development standards within the agenda packet, Phase One, which is on the concept plan proposed as Lot Three, will consist of the storage facility, which is actually an indoor climate-controlled facility. It's not the typical storage facilities that you see here in town. This one will actually be a building with the storage facilities inside. The other two lots that are proposed per the development standards will be developed in a commercial manner, and the uses, excuse me, listed within the highway overlay that are prohibited will not be developed on those two parcels. Now, this is a storage facility example of the type of product that the applicant has built previously. This is just an example. The reason for this example was just so the council had an idea of what this actual business looks like. Prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the development standards that were presented to staff and that staff reviewed and was recommending to the commission called for both or all three of the parcels to be developed in accordance with the highway overlay, and that included for the building materials to consist of 100% masonry. At the time of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the commission is asking or asked that the council consider a split of building materials to consist of 80% masonry and 20% metal materials. That change is in the development standards that are in this agenda packet. All other standards for the highway overlay are called out in the development standards. The base zoning district will remain light industrial, and the highway overlay will remain. The only deviation that the applicant is requesting is the use. All of the landscaping requirements and screening requirements will also remain. This, excuse me, this use does comply with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan calls, or the future land use plan calls this area out as mixed commercial, and defined mixed commercial consists of, excuse me, commercial and industrial uses. It's the highway overlay district that prohibits this use. For that reason, staff recommends approval of the request, and I'm present for any questions, and the applicant is as well.
Any questions with Ms. Sterns?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm reading under section 28.46.2. B of the highway-oriented and corridor district overlay, the list used for self-storage warehouse mini storages prohibited. And of course, can you explain to me, I guess, the main reason why, I guess, this type of business was prohibited? Why would we be changing that?
Sure. I can't, I don't know exactly why it was called out prohibited when this, it was a previous staff member who requested this to be prohibited or a prohibited use. I will say that we went through a couple of ordinance amendments, one of those being the use regulation chart was alphabetized. Prior to that, it was listed out based on use, auto or commercial or industrial. And the highway overlay did call out specifically that all industrial uses be prohibited. Whether that mini warehouse was a part of the industrial type use, I can't recall, but I think it was just to try and maintain the character of the highway overlay. I will say, though, that with buildings that are, you know, constructed to look like office buildings, it's not necessarily an industrial type use, if that makes sense.
So, for me, I think the office space, as you say, I know there's a storage facility that's off Travis Street in Cherman, it's a Ace Storage, if I believe, and it's a storage facility that also has office spaces that's attached to it. And, you know, I think, you know, looking at this, and I'm just thinking this all out, right, when it comes to the prohibited use that, of course, it was previously classified as industrial, I would like to see possibly more mixed use out of their business besides only exclusively storage.
And I can appreciate that. As I mentioned, just so, just to make sure I made, I clarified my point, Phase One or that Lot Three that you can kind of see, that is the only lot that is slated for this type of use. Phase One, which I can't, I think is Lot One, my eyes are failing me, and then Lot Two are slated for a commercial use. So, while they're not in the same building on that parcel, there will be, it's not a super mixed use, but it'll be a mixed use of commercial in that storage space.
So, Phase Two, let me just make sure I'm being this way.
Sure.
New kid on the block, eh? Is that slated to not be storage units right there?
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Phase Two, Lot One, and then a part of Phase Two is Lot Two up there at the very corner. Those are slated for commercial uses to abide by the use regulation chart and the highway overlay. So, any prohibited uses that are in the highway overlay will not be allowed on those two parcels. Just the Lot Three.
I think a big thing whenever we took that, or well, I wasn't part of, whenever that access to having storage units was taken off of the highway overlay, I think a big part was the interior climate controls weren't really a thing. So, I think people were thinking of big sprawling, you know, kind of like you see along Morton Street, the older type. But I think this way where they look a little more disguised and their interior looks a lot better, because I get it, this is the face of the city. I think the other thing that this kind of has working for it, I went and drove by that lot, and it goes down quick. So, that back building, you won't see very much of it from 75. Now, that front corner building, obviously, they're saving for a key commercial use. That one you'll see, but the rest will almost be blocked once that's built. I did have a question. Did the applicant ask for that 80/20, or was that just thrown out?
Um, it was brought up by the commission.
Okay. I do worry lowering our standards. I think it's never a good thing, especially if it's called out to be 100% masonry. I don't see the problem with keeping it 100%.
Other comments from council? All right, thank you.
Do you have one other question?
Yes, sir.
If we do move to approve this, Phase Two, could they come back and say, hey, we want to go ahead and put storage lots here, based off of us rezoning?
They would have to come back before the commission as well as council for approval on that.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak on this matter, please come forward and state your name and address, please, for the community. Anyone to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Discussion from council.
The other thing I would kind of recommend is maybe increasing the landscaping for the site. What's our current, Ms. York, I can't, I'm sorry. I can't remember what our current percentage is.
So, right now, it's 8% of the land.
What Chick-fil-A did is closer to 20% their landscaping. That looks really nice to me. So, I think we try to get closer to that standard. So, I would recommend 20% landscaping. Y'all are okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Our current landscape, what did she say, 7% that's citywide?
Eight, eight percent. Yes, sir.
Are you prepared to make 20% a new standard or a recommendation moving forward on commercial developments? When we go to landscaping ordinance, I plan to bring it up, but that goes to P&amp;Z this week to look at. But yeah, I think it really adds something to the property when you have that higher level of landscaping. Okay. And then the only other thing that I kind of had a question on, when we had talked about planned developments at one point, we talked about maybe putting a time on it or an expiration date, so that if someone hasn't built something by that point, it has to come back, because otherwise, say, other later on, their sales, this may not be the most appropriate use anymore in three, four, five years.
I don't know, I don't know if we can do that, because it's a zoning.
But maybe we can.
That would be better to discuss an executive.
Sorry. But they, just because this use is allowed doesn't mean they have to build that use. They could build any other use permitted if.
Yeah.
I have a question about the planned development. Once it's a planned development, does it stay that way?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I think what I'm hearing a little bit of is that the council is very concerned about the quality, the overall quality, and the appearance of the product here, so.
Yes, sir. With the planned development, you have the development standards that come with it, and the highway overlay is an already established ordinance, and if it follows the highway overlay, I guess if the highway overlay was amended, would it then amend the PD?
Only to the extent it doesn't conflict with specific language in the PD, but yes.
Okay. So, if we were to amend our building material requirement or anything like that in the highway overlay, it would then?
Okay. As a city, we've got some choices to make, right? And we're moving towards incentivizing things that our neighbor cities have done. As a citizen who's lived in other cities that had muds and pits, I prefer us to steer towards planned development where we can have a little bit more control over what the end product looks like and doesn't tack our citizenry with the cost of that burden down the road by gerrymandering out these little nodes in the city that have them. Where I've been involved on the construction side in other cities where we have planned developments, I look at this plan, and I think we've got all of the things that we want. We've got lipstick on the outside of a building that creates a viable deniability of the industrial nature of the space on input through fair. I think your landscaping point's probably not a bad one, and if it doesn't set a precedent moving forward that causes our developers and investors who are coming into town to do the things we need as a city to take on those cost burdens, then 20% is not a negative. It just may be a deal breaker in some cases. But I agree, when you come to a hard corner and an intersection that drives people into our city, we need it to be attractive.
And our applicant is here, too, if you needed to discuss any of the additional requirements with them.
It appears he is coming behind you.
He's coming behind me, okay.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Brandon Middleton with Kimley Horn here in Fort Worth. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I understand, and you make a great point, there is about 60 feet of fall between Highway 75 and Randall Lake, so that building, even at three stories, is going to be fairly hidden, which is, which is great. On the landscape requirement, we also have to make sure these buildings, retail, commercial, market's not strong for that right now, so we want to make sure that, you know, we can actually deliver on that requirement. We're not against maybe enhancing the landscape, but 20% seems a little bit high, in our opinion. So, maybe we could be a little bit more strategic on where we place the landscape. We are going to keep the entire flood, it's not flood plain, but it's a creek and tree line. We're keeping all that as is untouched. And so, we're going to have a lot of tree preservation on our hard corners, you know, to meet that, the city criteria. I also have Ozil, Virgil, to ask, to answer any questions about the materials for the building. I thought the P&amp;Z commissioner brought up a great point, you know, allowing for something other than rock or masonry or stucco, like allowing for metal or some kind of, I'll say, architectural enhancement is what we actually saw would be a positive. It's actually a little bit cheaper for us, you know, to do 100% masonry, but if, so that's why we were actually, we were willing to do the 80/20, because we thought it would be positive for the city, but certainly open to y'all's opinion on that.
How much of a billboard function do you anticipate the storage facility becoming? Like your signage on that, the exterior of that building?
We would meet all city criteria. We wouldn't have any additional billboardings. I mean, people that rent from this space kind of know where it is, so we don't have to really advertise for it. So, very little.
I do, I don't mind the 80/20, having a little bit of variation in materials can make it attractive. Landscaping, so if you feel like 20% is high, what would you consider a reasonable amount that's above 8%?
I mean, 8% is pretty standard. I mean, I mean, maybe 10%, 12% is the direction we would go, but understanding that Highway 75 is a significant corridor for the City of Denison, we also want to make sure it's, looks nice, and, but we also don't want to price ourselves out of the market, you know, for those buildings.
With the 80/20, I would feel better if we saw the rendering of the building, you know what I mean? 80/20 still leaves a lot of room for there to be a full side of. Put up that picture of the example, what they did. So, I mean, that looks like it's actually more metal than masonry. I don't think it looks too bad.
I just worry about those sides, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I get it. I get it.
This is the direction that the industry is moving. If you drive down 380 north of McKinney, Frisco, Little Elm, you'll see this structure on both sides of the highway about every half a mile, and they're starting to move more and more towards this mixed material system. And having built and worked on those type of buildings, there's challenges with a mixed media product like that. So, when the city's pushed towards it, it's actually, in some ways, it's a headache. It may be a cost savings for him, but now you're talking about a different trade, tying in disparate materials that expand and attract at different rates. It's not as easy as saying, I want this pretty thing, and I want it to look like this. It does have a knock-on consequence down the road for maintenance and things of the facility. So, an 80/20 works as far as the aesthetic that you're aiming for. You know, you just don't want to end up being Frisco where they say masonite has to be two squares on the side of a building, and your houses have brick except for the one side of the garage that faces the neighbor, right? So, if your challenge is the 80/20, I think the industry standard would say 80/20 is normal in the way that the direction north Texas is going for this aesthetic. If your challenge is, let's make sure that we don't have that 20% be pigeonholed to one side or the other, I think that's a different statement you're making. And so, in this case, they're choosing all four sides to have a mixed media application, if that's what you want, to where you have a consistent 80/20 on each side, then that may make it easier for the design team to just say, we've got a, we got a high water line of the masonry lives at 12 feet above grade, and then above that is metal, or vice versa, probably masonry on the bottom. But you'll find that that's what's going, you know, probably in Austin Stone and Standing Seamer, our panel side.
And I think one of our main concerns is the way our city looks to visitors that drive past, and this particular facility is going to be a little bit difficult to view from the highway, it sounds like.
It's on the lowest point of the property. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments?
I can do the 80/20 work, which I recommend for landscaping.
I realize there's trees on here, like in parking spaces, like.
Can you scroll back to the lot? There you go, thank you.
Yeah, I just think of like TMC or something where they have parking and they have trees and permits and parking lot, you know, it's nice.
I'm sorry, thank you. Staff is bringing proposed landscaping amendments to the commission tomorrow for them to provide feedback and then direction to also bring those amendments as a public hearing. One of those, I don't have all that information in front of me, but tree islands and parking spaces, landscaping strips. landscaping strips along our major thoroughfares are some of the things that we are trying to bring forth in that landscaping ordinance. But I don't have that information in front of me, but it is something that we are moving towards or bringing before both bodies.
So just bear in mind, if we force a tree island and it costs, we have a ratio that eliminates some of the options for tenancy there. So, you know, in this, it looks like he's proposed one per 250. Years ago, you might have had seven per thousand for office space and now we're in a different market and so we don't have to have as many bodies in a building and they're not a cubicle farm anymore. They're looking at having a little bit more humanity to the inside of a building and its tenancy. And so you get, you know, your offices would require a certain amount and a restaurant might require more. So to give the flexibility for the future use of this, we may want to avoid having compromised lost parking spaces. So maybe something next, adjacent to the building that is, you know, drought tolerant or appropriate to North Texas.
I guess my feeling is I would be fine with 12%. What do y'all, what do y'all feel?
Any, any thoughts on that?
I can, I can probably go with that. Julie, if we're about to do that landscaping ordinance, we couldn't have this, the landscape ordinance apply once it's approved if we made that part of the PD?
No, if you want to have it be 12%, then you would include that in your motion so it can be added into this PD ordinance itself.
So you said 12% is a number that you're comfortable with? I, I understand what I'm asking.
I have 110, but yeah, I think 12 is fair.
Any other comments, questions? Anyone else want to speak in the public hearing? Oh, okay, never mind, you can't speak anymore.
I need to have a question on phase two, are you going to be developing phase two as well?
I hope to be, I'm just a civil engineer. But yes, phase two would come, you know, shortly after this first phase.
Gotcha, and then those aren't for the storage facilities, phase two?
Phase two are the two out parcels for the commercial retail.
Gotcha.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the request to reason on the subject property from light industrial in the highway oriented and corridor overlay district to a planned development overlay to allow for the use of warehouse mini self-storage and commercial uses with the amendment of 12% landscaping be provided.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is the second, a motion by Councilman Hander, second by Councilman Courtright. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carries. Thank you, sir, we welcome you. Item B, Ms. Sterns, if you'll come on this way, we are to receive a report, hold a discussion.
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry. I think that with that motion, Julie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if they are comfortable with the 80/20 of the materials, does that need to be a part of the motion?
Only if it's not in the staff report as recommended.
It was in there as a consideration because the commission didn't actually put it as a recommendation. They asked that they consider it, so it wasn't in my recommendation to them to approve with that 80/20 split.
Okay, then, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, so.
So we need to go back and add.
Do I just amend it or just need to re-say it from the top? Okay, I'm in my motion to include a masonry requirement of 80% and 20%, 8% masonry.
Second.
Did you want to specify that it's uniform around the whole building or do you give the developer the authority to choose their?
We'll give the developer the choice and see, I'll have some faith.
And the, the PD will be worked forward through the city. Any other questions, comments? All in favor, oh, yes, sir.
Second.
Second on, by Councilman Courtright for the amendment, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Thank you. Motion carries now, Ms. Sterns. Come on up. We're to receive a report under item B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance updating the stormwater sections of the Public Works Design Manual. Ms. Sterns?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. Thank you for letting me speak on this tonight. We adopted our Public Works Design Manual in March of this year. It's been super successful so far. It's really nice to have a document with design standards to just hand people instead of having to comb through the ordinances, trying to find everything that's applicable to their projects. One of the pieces of feedback that we've gotten from our development community, specifically our engineers that we work with on private development, is the need for a little bit more clarification. There are a lot of different ways to do things like hydraulic modeling and there are a lot of different studies and requirements that we have when it comes to stormwater. So this amendment will kind of go back and give some guidance. So when your project looks like this, these are the things that we're going to require. This is the modeling, the type of modeling that we'd like to see. So it's, it's not any big changes, it's just giving some guidance to our engineering community on how to present their information to us. And that's it.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak either for or against or make comments on this item B? If none, then we'll close the hearing and invite council for questions or comments. Anyways, is there a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the ordinance updating the stormwater sections of the Public Works Design Manual.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Hander, second by Councilman Thorne. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries, thank you very much, thank you. And now to item C, Mr. Bates. We were to receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance amending Chapter 26 Utilities by amending and replacing Article 6 Drought Contingency Plan to adopt a new drought contingency plan.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council, thank you for letting me present this. Every five years, we have to update our drought contingency plan. You can do it, TCEQ allows you to do it anywhere between one and five years, but five years being the max. Last time we updated it was in 2019. The reason for us bringing it a year ahead is because we've had a lot of changes that require us to update it. Changes in the system, changes to wholesale water customers, which was one of the items we approved on the consent agenda, and changes in our water use. So I'm presenting the changes with you here. So stage one, we, we were, the previous one was a stage four and only went to stage four. This one's going to be stage five, we added the stage two mid. And so just walking through that a little bit, the voluntary mild, stage one is eight MGD per day for seven days and then following stage two with 10 MGD for five days and so on and so forth. The numbers in the parentheses on the right were the numbers that were used prior to this update and that was what was done prior to this one. So as you all also can see, the TCEQ had an issue with, it was not, I guess, identified back when this one was done in 19, but it was now, is that you can see going from the 11 MGD to the 12.8 was a very short timeframe. We're actually spreading it out just a little bit so that we can have time to react when, when the usage of the water starts increasing. So that's the main difference in this change. Any questions?
Questions from council? This is a public, thank you, sir, this is a public hearing and anyone willing to, wanting to speak at this time, please come forward, state your name and address for us. Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Discussion, council? Anyone? Okay, if not, is there a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 26 Utilities by amending and replacing Article 6 Drought Contingency Plan to adopt a new drought contingency plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Thorne and a motion by Councilman Hander. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Now we're moving to the item, or category six, items for individual consideration, Mr. Bates, welcome back.
Thank you. So currently, right now, we have a current project that's underway. It's our Lake Texoma raw water intake project. That project was approved eight months ago or more from council. And we have a good contractor in place and they're doing a great job. The contract that was approved was not to exceed amount of $39, $39 million. However, we're coming today to present a request for approval for a change order in the amount of $9,000, $9,686 and 836. So the reason for that is, as you know, that we have so a contract with some Northwest Dennison Development Projects that we have a certain timeline that we're trying to meet for some development that's going on out there. This map in front of you is an overall drawing schematic of all the, the water sewer lines that are headed out that direction. In order to meet our timeline, we wanted to go ahead and add this project to the good contractor that we already have on contract through a C Mar project to where, let me go to the next slide here, that gray, the yellow square, all that's within city property. And so if we can go ahead and do this blue line, which if you'll notice the red circle, if we can go ahead and do this change order, while they're putting that other line in, the other blue line that's not in the red, that's part of this contract, we will save quite a bit of money and time, save approximately about eight months getting us to the timeline that we need to have for some of the development out north. The other thing that we need to work on is the green line from the blue checkered area up to the top right, all the way through the city property over to the left side there. If we can get the water and sewer lines in, this is going to help us dramatically meet to that eight, that month, our current contract of getting water and sewer out there by eight months. So that's what this request is for. I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions from council? If none, is there a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve change order number one, amending the contract with Archer Western Construction for construction of the Lake Texoma Raw Water Pump Station and Transmission Line in an amount not to exceed $9,686,008.36 and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Councilman Hander, second by Councilman Courtright to approve item A. Is there any other discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries, Mr. Bates, one more time. Item B, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on change order number one, amending the contract with SYB Construction for construction of the Waterloo Lake Sewer Line Improvements, Phase One, in the amount of $2,599,027.26 and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same. Mr. Bates?
SYB is an awesome contractor, it's probably one of the best ones I've ever had the opportunity to work with. As many of you know, if you've been down Waterloo Lake and around the park and everything, it's kind of a mess, but they've really quickly, they're actually about two months ahead of schedule and it looks like we may be somewhere around the $200,000 to $300,000 range as far as having a positive money back to us instead of asking for more money. So they've done a great job. One of the reasons we're asking for the change order is because we got another little project that I need their help with quickly. As you know, according, well, on this map here, the squared area is, is an area that we're talking about, but 84 has a 10-inch, or has a water line that runs out to the north that feeds all the existing properties out there now. That line is very old, it has a lot of problems and for some reason in the past, they decided to put in a 10-inch, change it to an eight inch in the middle and then go back to 10-inch from there. And what that does, as you know, with garden hose and stuff, is by the time you get the water that far out, the pressure has dropped so much. And so we're having some problems with pressure drop. We're also having a lot of the construction that's going on that needs the water and so we're having some pressure issues. So what we decided to do was, since we got a great contractor here, we go ahead and do a change order and have them get that fixed quickly. That is the only line that runs out there and feeds all the way out to Grandpappy's Point and all the other stuff out there. So it's pretty important. So we're asking for permission to do a change order in this amount. This is the section, the segment from 75 up to just past the 84 Country Club out there on the left side, south side of the road. And we'll be upgrading that, not just going back with 10-inch, we'll be fixing the, we'll be getting rid of it and putting it all 12-inch back in to help with pressure out that way. I'm here for any questions.
Questions from council? If not, is there, is there a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve change order number one, amending the contract with SYB Construction for construction of the Waterloo Lake Sewer Line Improvements, Phase One, in the amount of $2,599,027.26 and authorize the interim city manager to execute the same.
Second.
Here's a motion by Councilman Hander, second by Councilman Thorne. Any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bates. And now Ms. Osoball. Item C, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on a resolution calling for a public hearing to consider an increase in tax revenue.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. Good evening. And as a government unit, the city of Dennison is required to publish the 2023 proposed tax rate and hold a public hearing regarding an increase in tax revenue. And the truth in taxation requirements of Texas reads that if the proposed rate exceeds the voter approval rate or the no new revenue rate, then the governing body of the taxing unit must vote to place a proposal to adopt the rate on a future meeting agenda and there must be a recorded roll call vote. The days of the public hearing must be stated and notices must be published. So therefore, the city of Dennison is proposing a tax rate for 2023 at .652034. And this is the same rate that we currently have. This rate does not exceed the voter approval rate, but it does exceed the no new revenue rate of .642342. Therefore, this requires a public hearing. And notices will be posted August the 25th in the newspaper and on our website. And the public hearing will be held at our next council meeting on September the 5th. Adoption of the tax rate is also set for that same meeting. The proposed tax rate will raise more revenue than last year's properties, the same properties, by 795,000, give or take a couple hundred dollars. The revenue raised from new property added to the tax roll is 953,000. So that's a total of, a little over 1.7 million. Staff recommends approving this resolution to call a public hearing to increase the tax revenue for the city of Dennison as required.
Thank you very much. Is there any comments, questions for Ms. Osoball? If not, this, this vote requires a roll call and if there's no other questions or comments, Ms. Valentine, would you please call for a vote?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve the resolution, calling for a public hearing for an increase in tax revenue.
Second.
Now, any other questions, comments? Now, Ms. Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As I call your name, if you'd please vote yes or no, Councilmember Hander?
Yes.
Councilmember Courtright?
Yes.
Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Massey?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
And let the record reflect, Mayor Gott is absent. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Osoball, if you want to join us one more time, we have a project update to receive a report, hold a discussion and receive direction from the council on the FY 2024 budget.
Hey, good evening again. I'm here to present the proposed budget for fiscal year '24. And it has been filed with the city clerk's office and posted on our website. This is a balanced budget as required by state law, which means that our revenues either meet or exceed our projected expenses for the year. The items that I will touch on will be the property tax rates, capital funds, the operating funds and our timeline. Our property tax rates, a current tax rate is .652034. The proposed rate is. The proposed rate is going to be the same. Our no new revenue rate is .642342. As you can see, that is lower than the proposed tax rate and the voter approval rate is .859743, which is higher than our proposed rate. Okay. This slide shows the history of Dennison's tax rate at tenure intervals. The tax rate, as you can see, slowly declined up to 2003, the yellow bar, and then it has stayed relatively stable. It's really hard to see on this graph, but the 2023 rate is slightly lower than what it was in 2013, the blue, the blue bar. Next is our general capital fund. Items on the left were presented at the last meeting. On the right, there have been additional items added to come from our general capital fund. This list is not all-inclusive, this is just the, the more major purchases that would affect the balance in that fund. Utility capital fund, we also have items on the left from the previous meeting with new items added on the right. The operating fund balance for the general fund is proposed to end 2024 with cash of almost $7.5 million, which is 60 days of reserve. As you know, this is the lowest we can go and stay within our reserve requirements. So in other words, it's going to be a tight year. Utility fund balance is proposed to end with a cash balance of $3.9 million. This is also at our 60 days of reserve, which is our minimum. Okay, the fund balance on the previous slides include increased costs that were shown at our last council meeting. These are inflationary costs just tied to cost of doing business. These fund balances also include market adjustments to pay and a 5% cost of living adjustment listed on the bottom left. As you know, recruiting and retaining staff has been a reoccurring topic and has been a focus of council this year. And our remaining budget timeline, will be, the, the next step will be on September the 5th, DDA will present their budget for approval. We will conduct a public hearing and adopt the 2024 budget and conduct a public hearing and adopt the 2023 tax rate. So I am here to answer any questions you may have or if you have questions later, feel free to reach out. So this is just a presentation only and there's no action.
All right, thank you. Any questions, gentlemen?
Did that, the 5% comma, did that apply to civil service and non-civil service? Was that just across the board for everybody?
Yes.
Okay, good. And then were we able to do the, the only other question was the bilingual? We talked about maybe like a stipend or something like that, were we able to work that in there?
Employee services would have to answer that. I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
So. I was given the numbers and plugged them in and I verified them, plugged them in, so.
I go through it all and I'm like, wow. I just didn't know where to look for that part, but everything else looked.
Okay.
Just you and your crew did a great job.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. And by the same time, council, everyone in this room, we appreciate all of your efforts. It's, it's a hard, hard job, a gazillion little boxes to fill in and check off and.
I've got a great team.
Job and you've got a great team, but we have a great city and a great staff and we thank you all for, for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
At this time, thank you very much, Ms. Alsaball. At this time, pursuant to chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time and is deemed necessary during the meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda items permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter which the attorney should do to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct conflicts with the chapter and will consult with attorney without pending or about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, section 551.071. At this time, it looks like it's 6:54, so we'll adjourn for an executive session.